Good morning. We're going to call this special meeting of the city council to order on Tuesday, November the 28th at 10:00 a.m. There are two agenda items. I can go ahead, I guess, and announce both of them now. One will be, well, let's just do number one, the home occupation regulation. And I don't know who's going to take over with this. Mr. McDaniel will start us out?
Yes, Mayor, I'll go ahead and start. So, this item has been through the planning and zoning commission, and we have had an issue with our home occupation ordinance for some time in that the court, municipal court, city attorney, found it difficult to enforce because some of the enforcement action is actually implied in the definitions of the ordinance rather than being in the body of the ordinance. So, with one exception, staff really views this item as a cleanup more than anything else to enable us to enact what we already have on the books, or enforce what we already have on the books. The one exception is the registering or permitting of home occupations. And so, the planning and zoning commission has recommended that that be included. Staff does have some concerns about that in terms of cost, and there's no fee currently associated with it, and just the volume of applications that we might receive given the staff that we have today. So, not sure that it'd be terribly, terribly a lot, a great deal of applications, but that is a concern. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Sabina, who has some slides that she has to review with you, and I know that she sent out some information earlier as well, so that you had a chance to look at it.
Sabina, I listened to the P&amp;Z meetings where you introduced this, but I had a question, just general question. What was the impetus for this? Was there a complaint that couldn't be enforced, or there are complaints that are not addressed? Or, I didn't pick that up anywhere. Do you know why this came forward, to begin with?
Well, the impetus for this was a code enforcement case on Methodist encampment. And I do have code enforcement staff here with me that could cover some of those details, if you wish.
I'm very familiar.
Okay. But what the, in looking at the case and doing the background research and talking with the homeowner, from where the, where we were trying to address the complaint, we uncovered through working through legal and preparing the case to get all of the, which we need to do, to have a lot of the documentation that we need, and to get all of the citations in order, that we had an issue because we had, we didn't have actual prohibitions. There are references to the prohibition within the definition, and that's where we started.
Okay.
And I'll just step you through the, in a little more detail here. So, this, the discussion has actually been to the planning and zoning commission six times.
Yes.
So, in April, they started talking, and as I said, with that impetus, and looking at the ordinance itself and what can be done, the planning and zoning commission then talked, told the staff, "Go forth and do some research, and come back to us," and the staff did that, and prepared a first draft, and really kind of put really anything in there that they found that other cities were doing to give kind of a comprehensive approach. Everything but the kitchen sink is what I call it. And they did talk about registration, talked about storage, advertising or signage, the specific uses, what would be likely to be a nuisance within the neighborhood, what would be likely to not, and fit within the residential character, and have low or no impact within the residential neighborhood, and what do you do with existing uses? They had some discussion there. There's further review at that, at the June 15th meeting, and then on July the 6th is when finally the planning and zoning commission felt ready to proceed and actually have a public hearing on the question. In September, and that's, and at that point, I joined the team, had joined the team, there, we did schedule, had scheduled it for a public hearing, and there were some additional changes that the planning and zoning commission discussed. Mike, Mr. Hayes, our city attorney, also talked a little bit with the planning and zoning commission, and we drew back and regrouped some. We did have one person speak at that public hearing, and pointed out a few, a few things that we might want to look at as a, as the commission. And so, because there were going to be a few changes to the, to the draft, we decided that to be on the safe side, we should re-advertise another public hearing, which we did on October the 5th, and the commission did recommend approval. And I'll just show you the highlights here. Now, one of the things that, between the first and second draft, the first and second public hearing, that I was looking at was this, the question of registration. And to be honest, I almost took it out, but I realized that there had been other discussions at the planning and zoning commission level, and so I didn't feel right just doing that unilaterally. So, I brought it back up as a, as a focus point at the planning and zoning commission. And there was one planning and zoning commissioner that voted against the positive recommendation, but otherwise, there was a recommendation to bring this forward to the, to the city council with a positive recommendation, as it was presented that second time to the planning and zoning commission. Without a fee, though. That was, I believe, in the past, discussed that there should not be a fee for the registration. The whole reason that it came up as a discussion point was, and as the staff at the time pointed out, was to have an inventory, so that we, if we received a complaint, that we would be able to say, "Okay, at this address, we know that there's a home occupation going on, and that this is what, what has been basically permitted in the past." And we may have additional information to be able to go back and say, "These are the conditions under which you said that you were operating, are you still operating under that?" To kind of start that discussion. So, that was the reason behind it. But one of the, one of the questions that came up was, "Well, if we're going to be requiring registration of home occupation, shouldn't we be requiring all businesses to have some type, some form of registration through the city, and be able to address larger, at a larger level, higher level, some additional questions, and having, you know, having a true inventory, and not just the picking on the home occupations? The 25% of living area, I show that it struck out, because that was another change between the first and second draft that went to the planning and zoning commission. That being, and the photos that I passed out to you, they're not, they won't be on the screen, but the photos that I passed out to you actually went to the planning and zoning commission that first, at that first discussion time in the spring of this year. And you'll see in those photos with one exception, I believe just one, that they all look like homes. And that is the intent of the, of the ordinance, is to, is to allow these home occupations where you cannot tell from the outside that you have a business going on on the inside. Definitely, certainly, your professional type of uses also really could be more intense as long as you can't tell as a neighbor that there is a business being conducted in that, inside the home. And so, to us, it really didn't seem, even though the 25% limitation is pretty typical across the board in other ordinances, I'm not exactly sure where that came from, but it was probably in order to keep the house itself functioning as a home, is probably the intent behind that.
It probably coincided with the tax code. You can deduct up to 25%, I think.
Could be.
No, you can deduct all the rest.
Oh, it used to be 25% of your home. Okay.
And we do try, when we, when we draft these ordinances, we do try to limit any cross-pollination that way, if, in case a state law or a federal law changes, that we would still want to be in compliance, not have to go back and change our ordinances just because some law changed somewhere else. So, we do try to be somewhat generic in that way.
I'm sorry, Sabina, could you address the resident employees? What is the, what is the consistency of that?
Yes. The, the, basically, the limitation would be that, that anybody that works there actually lives there as well.
No outside.
That is the...
No outside, that's what I was wondering.
Right, that you don't have outside employees coming to the home.
What's the history behind the registration without a fee? I'm a bit concerned that we may end up, spend a fair bit of money, and I, do we have other things that we register, or do something similar without a fee?
Other than trash haulers, just listening to the meeting, the staffs, who was Danny Betts at the time, was saying that to avoid having to have KPD, an officer, go out, if you get a call, this was what he explained, if you get a call that somebody's doing something, and they don't think, the neighbor doesn't think it's legal, KPD or someone has to go out and investigate, or code enforcement. And if you, the thought was, as I heard it, if you register, and it's registered as a legal business at that home, then they can look it up online when somebody calls in, code enforcement could say, "That is a registered legal use of that address, and here, if you want to know, are the parameters for that."
Well, that still doesn't explain to me why we do it without a fee.
Well, just, I guess, the logistics of it, I didn't hear the argument there.
Yeah, we don't currently do it, so this would be, if we did it, the planning and zoning commission is recommending that we don't charge a fee. So, staff does have concerns about just the whole registration process.
Well, do we have other things that we do without a similar sort of fee?
Not extensively. I mean, you know, some cities would do garage sale permits, or, you know, fence permits.
Feathered flags. Feathered flags and...
What is the process to register?
Flags.
Say again. Feathered flags.
Feathered flags.
And balloon permits.
For a period of time throughout the year.
And is there a fee for that?
No.
No? Okay.
What is the process to register? Do they all, does the city come and check the property, or?
Well, actually, that's, that's not an inventory, that's not a registration process, that's a, that's a permit, that's, that's required, but there's no fee. So, when they, when they submit for their permit, we will have a record of it with that submittal, but there's, there's no inventory that we keep up with.
He's asking about home occupation registration. What would be the process for that?
What would be?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They would go to...
Fill out a form.
Development services, and probably fill out a form there.
So, does the city want to check at all?
Well, if we got a complaint, we'd probably go check it out and make sure they had one. But we do that, we do that now, if there's concerns about any nuisances, or, you know, traffic, or what have you, we'll investigate it now.
Sabina, do you have any kind of idea, I know this is a difficult question, do you have any kind of idea, because we're worried about manpower and that kind of stuff if we register, how many of these businesses we're talking about?
I'll, I'll tell you that they're few and far between.
That's what I was thinking.
But I think the bigger point is, right now, we don't really have a good tool if we do, if we did have an issue, that we, where we needed that tool, we currently don't have it, because it's buried in the definition, and there's, there's no actual prohibition. There's reference, reference to it, and there's an implication that you're out, that you're in violation if you don't meet the definition. But it's not enough to, to get us through a process if we ever needed to issue a citation. I don't believe that we've ever gotten to that level. If you'll recall from our code enforcement discussion, it's pretty, it's actually fairly rare that we get to that level where we issue a citation. Now, we will. But, but because we work so much with a, with a, with a violator, or the potential violator, that, that they usually come into compliance. In this, in this instance, if we had to go to that level, it's our understanding that legally, we're on really shaky ground, and if somebody really understands that, then, then other than getting voluntary compliance, we, we can't get it, we can't go to that level.
When you did your research on this for P&amp;Z, before we leave the registration thought, the other communities that you looked at, did they have a registration process?
The ones that I've worked in, we did not.
We did not?
I've worked in it where they have special use permits, so go through a whole process each time for X number of years, or where a term set by the planning and zoning commission or the council. The other concern that I have in terms of just enforcement registration is, in this day and age, lots of people work from home on the computer, you know, everybody can work anywhere. And so, I think we have a lot more of this going on than we understand, just like Airbnb, or other types of activities in the neighborhoods. When it becomes a problem is when, you know, you have too many deliveries, you've got people coming to your house to provide services to them, and, or you've got employees coming to your home, that sort of thing. And then, so, I think the way that we would envision it, as we've talked, is it's by right, as long as you adhere to the requirements of the ordinance, that you can't create these nuisances or these problems in the neighborhood. And then if you do, then we've got, we've got a mechanism to enforce a prohibited, basically.
So, here's the deal, how do you get that information? How do you disseminate that? And obviously, people don't know, because they're not required to register, they, they're working in their house, somebody complains, they get a telephone call, or a knock at the door, and so, then they're handed the ordinance, and this is what you can and cannot do? Is that the way we envision it working? And they get a warning, and they can correct it, and they have a time period?
Sure. That's, that's pretty much the way it works now, and it's not too much different than a code enforcement violation. It's by complaint typically, and we would go investigate and try to get voluntary compliance. If not, then we go through a citation process.
Right. And unless it's one of the prohibited uses, what we're probably looking at is being very specific to, to making, if there's one performance standard that they're not meeting, if they have an office, for example, but they're having a lot of deliveries for a week or two, and we get a complaint, we may go out and, we will go out and, and respond to, to the, to the case, but in the conversation, might find out, well, they're, they just had a week where they're furnishing their office, for example, but that is not going to be the typical day-to-day process at that, at that location. So, we might find out that that is that, that one particular issue that they can address very quickly, but not the entire, having to cease and desist the entire, the entire use.
And you don't address any kind of grandfathering in this? I mean, once it's passed, it, that's the way it is for everyone, right? I think you had it listed on the first...
Yes.
It's in the new ordinance, it's in the, it talks about specifically what's going to be grandfathered, and what will.
Okay.
I mean, for me, ultimately, I'll simplify my thinking at the end of this, but we keep talking about, it's been brought up, that we don't have necessary authority, I guess, to enforce this stuff now. And I guess I don't follow why that's the case. What is, I mean, I understand the difference between definition and, you know, codes of enforcement, or whatever, but the way we set this up is, home occupations are allowable as a conditional use without a permit in any zone. And in our zoning rules, the conditional use permits, it exempts these things, and it says it, where it says, "But subject to the following stated conditions, home occupations operated in accordance with Article 1, which essentially is the definition." Why is that not enough for enforcement of, again, we're going to talk specifically about the Methodist Encampment Guide, why was that not enough to enforce that?
Well, one, you're dealing with regulations in a, in a defined area, you know, you want, you want a defined, you want a defined home occupation, and you want a separate section in the ordinance, in the zoning code, that delineates the regulations. And so, Sabina hit the nail on the head, this, the implication is that if you do it against these regulations, it's prohibited, but it doesn't say that in so many words. And, you know, the standard to get folks into court is, you've got to prove this beyond reasonable doubt, and that's a high standard. I know our judges, I know the way, our standards, and I felt at the time, we needed to pull this out, put it in its own section. It's not correct to say, "This is a conditional use." That's a defined term in our zoning code. This is just a regulation that applies to home occupation, that again, is built into defined areas. So, we need to pull this out, you know, to, to regulate it. And you all, this is a '97, you know, code, that's been amended, I think, twice, one once in 2000, and another time in 2007, and that was, that was really the only time I looked at it, and that was gunsmithing, because we had an issue that someone wanted to, you know, use their home and do a home occupation, gunsmithing. So, I'm telling you, from my, my opinion, this would have been a waste of time, and to take this, and that specific case into municipal court, and cite them for that. And so, that's why we've been talking about this for a year, year and a half.
And backing up for a second, because I've written many code enforcement letters in my time, and the first thing that you do is you explain, you explain how it's defined, but the second thing you do is you cite the section that prohibits that. And that's the problem even for us starting out without, with, well before we involve legal, is to help us through that, through the court process. And we, and we do that quite a bit. We don't involve Mr. Hayes' office every time, every time we're looking at. Now, if we get close to having to issue a citation, we'll give him a heads up. But just writing that, just writing that letter, the warning, or the explanation, so if I'm, if I'm conducting the home occupation, then, okay, I don't meet the definition, well, so what?
Okay, but as far as that, you would cite the code. So, the code is, in a residential zone, are you allowed to do commercial business? Am I allowed to do a vehicle maintenance business in a residential zone by right, in that zone?
No, but if somebody's living there and saying, "Well, my use is residential, my use is a home, it's my house." I just, I, but I'm also operating a car repair shop out of it.
And so, it's, it's allowable, then you're saying? Vehicle, I mean, couldn't we have solved that by simply saying, well, I'll hold this to the end, because this is where I kind of wrap up. I think a simpler way of dealing with this, but keep going through your explanation, I'm sorry.
And Sabina, I guess in the current one, it says, "Has no more than one employee who isn't a member of the immediate family to work there." And this new one says absolutely none. I know of an incident where, there is a, happens to be an elderly man who, quite wealthy, who has a little office in his home, and he has a lady who comes in and does his clerical work for him. So, that would be illegal under this?
The way that it's written in the draft, yes.
I can imagine that would be an issue, to have a lady come in, or man, either one, to come in and help with some clerical issue.
Well, truth is...
Or would we just say that that's, that's parallel to having somebody come in and clean your house?
Well, that's right.
You've had somebody come in and do a service for you.
Exactly.
It's not running a business in your home. It, it's a service that they're coming to provide.
Yeah, but they're, you're the receiver of the service, so that's, that's different than you running a business.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so, but if I'm, if I'm having somebody do clerical work for me...
For your business.
For my business, then that's...
But I'm presuming that this man is, is having this done for his own personal stuff.
A nonprofit.
Serving other people.
By serving other people as a nonprofit.
Oh, it is.
Well, the truth is, by this definition, we're going to have to, everybody that, with the registration focusing on that, everybody that brings work home to work on is technically doing home occupation, because they're doing their business at home. So, they would technically have to register to do that. Just something to think about, that's all. Carry on.
I've got a question, Sabina. One of these houses, I think I recognize, that, the owner owns the house and works out of it, but lives somewhere else, is that going to be allowable?
Well, the, the primary use would still have to be, would still have to be a residential, in a residential district.
If they're not doing this, the answer is just not allowable.
Right. The key is that it's a home occupation.
That's not allowed now, this is a home occupation. You're, you're using it as a home, you're occupying it as a home, you're doing a business out of the home. So, no, that's not, that's not legal now.
It's basically an accessory use.
So, is your illustration on Elm Street currently occupying the home and running a childcare out of it, on Elm Street?
I believe so, let me confirm that, on Elm Street.
All of the addresses that the photos that we took, I got all of them off of Google. So, I just Googled daycares, those are the addresses that came up.
But, but, yes, they, they would have to also be living there, so the operator must be living there. In other words, at night, the house is not empty.
So, one by one, the beauty, body and beauty needs, you're selling, that's a business, that's a retail or wholesale?
I know firsthand that that is a, she runs a spa out of her home.
Okay, so that would be illegal. And the lawn care?
Illegal?
No, no, no.
Under this?
You're saying she lives in that house?
She lives in the home. She does live in the home.
But you can't have retail sales on this ordinance? It's prohibited?
She does live in the home, but she does run a spa out of her home.
So, under retail wholesale, that would not be allowed, or barber, beauty, or nail prohibited?
Right.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
From the list, correct.
Okay. And the lawn care business would be prohibited? I don't see any equipment there, but you couldn't do, that's not repair, that's lawn care, so...
Right, that's, his home office is there in his home. He lives there, but his office is there.
And so, that would be, okay, under this?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just going one by one to just see.
Unless they have a lot of storage...
Right.
Where it's getting out of the norm.
I got you. And the architectural business is legal, would be legal? The childcare would not, is that right? Or would be?
It would be.
It would be?
It, it, it would be. Now, if they're getting into a commercial childcare, if they're getting, getting into that area, and they're not, actually not living there anymore, it's not a home as well. And, and, and there is some, some cross-pollination there, because, because there are state regulations that define a childcare, and when, and when there need to be additional employees there, when the home actually needs to change, and there needs to be a commercial kitchen, for example, with hood vent and things like that, so there, you can, with childcare, if you have a lot of children there, you start to get into regulations where you can no longer meet these performance standards.
Okay, under your summary statement, where you have equipment, nuisances, deliverance, and traffic, certain times of day, depending on the number of children being cared for, there would be additional traffic otherwise than normal? Is that correct?
Yes, and that was, and that was one of the discussion items at the planning and zoning commission level, which was, at some point, some of, some of these regulations do become a matter of interpretation, and may need to have further discussion, and a lot of documentation on how we reach that, that decision, that this, this level of traffic, and would probably involve engineering, and making sure that, that whatever analysis we have conducted, that it's reasonable, that, that they really have gone above and beyond the, the, what, what is a reasonable expectation for traffic on that street. We don't have a number right now that is an absolute standard attached to that.
What we're looking at here, this, this document, Sabina, is current?
That, yes. What was at your place? Yes.
Do we have a copy of the code? Brad?
I'm sorry, I don't have that right now. I believe it was emailed to you a couple of weeks ago.
We can make copy, though.
I failed.
Bring us some copy.
It's in the planning and zoning minutes of October 5th, if you don't have it separated out. Agenda?
Maybe.
It's in the agenda packet of it.
Would I find it on my iPad?
If you want, if you could trace in, they probably get it faster, if you could trace in to the planning and zoning, October 5th...
If you could trace into the Planning and Zoning, October fifth, um, meeting, the packet, it's in there. If I could print off my thing, I could do it.
So, what would you be asking, Mark, from us today?
So, uh, we have this scheduled tentatively for, um, first reading at your first meeting in January and then, um, second reading, second meeting. But we don't have to, if you guys want more time with it. We want to make sure, that's the purpose of the work session, is get everything out of the table, any concerns.
Okay.
And so that we can bring something to you all that's been properly vetted, that's going to just hold.
If they pull this up and print it, I'd, I'd, I would like to make some suggestions based on it. That I think, I think we can simplify this process if we looked at it a little more generally instead of so specific.
Why don't you go ahead and tell what you're gonna object?
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna make, I mean, generally speaking, is, is this. I mean, the goal of this whole deal, as I understand it, um, is to somehow create, um, the resi- or preserve the residential character of the residential zones. That's really what we're trying to do. And so, if that's the goal, then just kind of keep our eye on the ball. And it really should be as simple as any otherwise legal activity. So, we're not saying that you can like do a legal, but any legal activity done completely within the confines of the property. That are not perceptible from the outside the property, sight, sound, smell, I mean, basically. Should not be a concern to the city. So, if whatever they're doing is not affecting the outside, we shouldn't concern ourselves with it. Right? I mean, we, we can't enforce it anyways, so, so then generally speaking, that would be the goal. And so, um, instead, instead of doing these, um, focusing on home occupations. When you see what they bring out, it'll make more sense. But, um, just take the regulations that we are putting under home occupations and apply them to the residential zone. Say we prohibit this activity in a residential zone, for instance. One of the things that we're gonna talk about specifically aimed at home occupations is outside storage, okay? So, rather than making that a requirement that I'm, I'm only prohibited from doing it if I've got a home occupation. I should be prohibited from doing it in a residential zone, period. Because outside storage is what is detracting from the residential character of that zone. As it's, as we're doing it now, we're gonna regu- we're gonna prohibit outside storage if the guy has a home occupation. But as a, just a resident, we're not prohibiting.
It is, isn't it, code enforcement? Isn't it already?
Well, if it is, then we don't, then it's redundant to be putting it under.
If it's considered junk or, or trash.
The point is, we don't need to add complication to our codes. Because we can already enforce that as being illegal in the zone, right?
If it's considered junk or trash.
Okay, but the point, but that's my point. We should be regulating it under the zone, not under the, the cause of what's happening in the zone.
I think what you're saying is if it's illegal for a home occupation, it should be illegal for everyone.
In the residential zone.
And does that mean that you can't keep a, a riding lawnmower out somewhere in your backyard? Am I correct? Is that illegal now?
Yeah, I think the general, I, I, I see where you're going with that and it makes, it makes a lot of sense. But I, I think that the general idea behind the differences between home occupation and then everybody else is that, uh, and you kind of are getting into it, Mayor, is, you know. A person's home is their castle, they can do with, if as long as they're just living there and it's residential, there's more liberal uses, okay? If it's theirs, if their belongings in the yard, if they're, you know, the way they landscape and what, it's theirs. But when you begin to use your home as an enterprise to make money, then you are prospering theoretically at the expense of your neighbors if it's creating issues.
If it's creating issues, exactly. So, so the point is, to her point about the lawnmower, if, if me as a homeowner, having one lawnmower outside is a problem, taking away from the other people's property rights or values or whatever. Then it's irrelevant whether I've got a home occupation causing that infraction or not. And so, with things like signage, okay, we are going to allow signs, uh, under this new thing. We already do, I guess, but we're gonna allow signs in a yard, uh, a certain size, whatnot, for a home occupation. But putting an advertisement of any kind, even if it just says my business, detracts from the residential nature, character of this zone. So, why are we allowing a sign? If it's a home occupation, then the idea is that there should be no outward appearance, nothing perceptible from the outside world, that there's an occupation going on in there. Because that is what takes away from it. And the example here is, is the architect. He doesn't need a sign, because any business he's doing architecturally, there, it's not like an advertisement. I'm not driving around looking for an architect by the sign in his yard. So, it's not gonna take away from his livelihood to just say, we don't want signs in the residential zones that are commercial signs. So, that's, that's a simplification, we don't need to put that in there, just put it in the zone. You know, and when, when they get them, you'll, the prohibitions that are there, that we're putting under home occupation. All we have to do is slide them in under the zone, make them prohibitions in the zone. And we, we're accomplishing the same thing with less grief, if you will, and less administrative effort by code enforcement.
Yeah, I would say that in many cases we do, and, and those are your code violations.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not a one for one, but it, in general, we already do. Whether it's noise.
Well, even if.
Or smell.
Right.
Or what have you.
Even if we don't already, what I'm suggesting is any of these that are additional are really aimed at a residential zone code. And so, if they are redundant, we don't need to move them. If they're not redundant, then we add them to residential zone prohibitions. And if we want to further, because one of what they're, the print will show like seven or eight prohibited businesses, uh, business types.
Animal breeding, for example.
Yeah, okay, so if you want to prohibit those as a home occupation, just prohibit that activity, uh, in a residential zone.
In a residential zone.
And be done with it. You know, and so, you know, as far as telling people what they have to do, you know, we're, we're not, we don't have to do anything.
It just, it just gets complicated. Here's, here's an example from another city.
Okay.
A woman cooked and she liked to cater things. And so, it became a business to her.
Okay.
And then she decided that not only would she cater at other places, but on Sunday afternoons, she would invite people to her house.
Okay.
The neighbors began to throw a fit. Because the whole street was blocked up with traffic.
Okay.
I think we could hardly say you are not allowed to block up the whole street with traffic or what's gonna happen at the next family reunion or the next party.
Okay.
It does get to be a difference between whether you're doing it to make money or you're just doing it in the course of your life.
Okay, but the complication becomes, how do you enforce whether they're doing it to make money or not? Because if I'm doing.
Well, she's charging people to come and eat.
Okay, but how are we gonna know that on the phone?
Family reunions, you don't, um, well.
But that's what I'm saying, see, that's the gray area.
The neighbors complained, so we investigated. So, we had a rule that says you can't do that in a residential zone. So, it was easy to say to her, you've crossed the line.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, but, but see, but that situation would end up being prohibited.
In a residential zone.
In a residential zone as, as saying you can't do commerce in a regu- in a residential zone. If that's what you wanna do, that's, that's what you end up doing. So, like a consultant is not actually doing business transactions in the residential zone. But a caterer is actually, it's not retail, but it's a business transaction that's occurring in the, you regulate it that way. I mean, you can get at that and still not, because the flip side of this is, um, I, I don't know if they, you know, traffic. Okay, so, home occupations shall not increase the traffic volume, this is the, what the proposal is going to be. So, home occupation shall not increase the traffic volume on the street on which the business is located above typical residential street capacity. Okay, so what we're really trying to do is prevent blocked up streets, okay? But are we then gonna start going after the person who is blocking up the streets, not for commercial uses, but frequently? I'm, I'm, I'm throwing a party every week. It's just a party, it's not, I'm not doing business. This is, I'm creating a traffic nuisance frequently. But I'm allowed to and a guy that's making money isn't. You know, that's the kind of.
There's a number of Bible studies that do that too, you know, news.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, there's legitimate things that go on that we don't want to regulate, or we don't want to prohibit. But, um, but we do actually want to regulate, noise is another one. You know, a nuisance created, uh, creation of excessive noise, odors, vibrations, whatever, um, which is detectable outside the structure shall be prohibited. See, that seems to me not relevant whether the noise is created by home occupation or not. That's the residential character that is being affected. So, that would be something that we try and enforce under the residential zone and not tied to home occupation.
Well, I, I do think it gets dicey though. So, under the nuisances, so for example, the, the idea of odors and fumes. If it's my home and I, you know, my family comes over at least once a month and we barbecue, there's lots of smoke.
Right, no, you're, you're talking about validity of the actual nuisance prohibition, okay? But that's still not relevant to whether it's a home occupation or not. Because I'm gonna be your neighbor and whether you're running a home occupation or not, if you're cooking some god awful food out there and I don't like it, I don't care if you're running a business. I just want the smell gone. So, is, is the city able to enforce that whether you've got a home occupation or not? Probably not. So, we shouldn't even try it under home occupation, because it makes no sense. But, you know, some of these just, like I said, I think we're complicating it by trying to make this narrow thing that creates a situation of residential zones. Where it's, um, if I don't tell you that I'm doing a home occupation, then I'm able, if I'm not doing a home occupation. Then I'm able to do some of these things clearly detracting from the residential character. But if I register a home occupation, I'm not, that doesn't make sense.
So, Sabina, how many of these things, for instance, uh, under, on page eight, would be prohibited in a residential zone, period? Like you said, this, the odor, the, the noise, the traffic, are those things already?
Well, we've got, we've got really two things that we're proposing here. And, and one is the, the list of per, uh, prohibited uses and list of permitted uses. But the second thing are those, uh, performance standards. And I think those, so, uh, so if you can address, if, if you have a home occupation and it is not on this, on this use list. So, it's, it's a permitted home occupation and, and it's just one of these standards, say you have a lot of, say you have five lawn mowers out there. If you come back and, and you restrict that or you put them where we can't, there's no outside storage of those things. You can address the issue and yet still keep your home occupation. And, and if I could, if I could rewind here for, just for a second, and the, the whole concept, and this is kind of Planning 101. The, the whole concept of nuisances versus specific standards in a zoning ordinance was discussion early, early on before, with the, with the early zoning ordinances. Can't we just address these things through nu- nuisance law? And, um, and I think some of the, some of the early municipalities that were, that were playing around with, with zoning law, uh, at first, were trying to go in that direction. But with the complexity of, and the, and the evolution of what zoning came to be, uh, there was a recognition that we needed standards. And, and that it needed to be divided and needed to be more complex than, than just nuisance. Because, um, what might be a god awful smell to one person might not to the other, for example. Uh, to, to, and, and reasonable minds could differ. And that's where, that's where you come up with these standards that are a lot more understandable, that are, there may be some gray areas and some room for interpretation. But you ha- you do have a lot of the time written in black and white, what you can and cannot do, pretty easy to understand. Of course, you do need to get, roll up your sleeves a little bit sometimes. But then also to have these performance standards against which just about anybody ha- is on notice against which they, those would be measured. Now, again, with the home occupations, simply prohibiting animal breeding, for example, sure, right now you cannot have an animal breeding service in a residential district. If it's freestanding. However, if you're making the argument, I live there and I just have, and that, that's my, that's my business that I have, but my primary use is my home. We would have a very difficult argument and I would suspect also getting through municipal court, if it comes to that, uh, to, to make that case, to make. And, and what we're trying to do here is really to help us in this, in the instances where we really need it, and those are very rare. But, but when we do need it, at least we have that tool.
Okay, but, but just to grab up the example you gave, animal breeding, okay? We're gonna prohibit it here and I guess what you're trying to say is that if it's listed as a home occupation, if we define it as a home occupation, then we can prohibit it. But if we don't define it as a home occupation, we cannot prohibit animal breeding in a residential zone? Is that what you're trying to say?
If the, if the homeowner makes the argument, my use is really a home, I'm doing that as my business out of it, but I'm, but my primary use is a home. From, from a code enforcement standpoint, I would have a very difficult, difficult time making that case.
And, and then the next question I would ask would be, again, back to the original, if they're doing animal breeding within their, the confines of their home, then why do we care? I mean, if, because right now, I mean, all the nuisance aspect of animal breeding, I assume, I could be wrong, would be the, you know, the barking, maybe the smell, I, I don't know. I mean, what would, what would we care as long as it's not affecting us? But you can make the argument that I don't need to be breeding animals to be a nuisance to my neighbors if I just let the dog out in the yard. Even if it's fenced in, if I got a rottweiler out there, it's creating a, a danger zone to the next door neighbor, even if it's inside the fence. You know, but we can't regulate that, so why are we trying it here?
We do have a limit on the number of pets, don't we?
What we do is four. If you got four fish in your tank, that fifth one, you're, you're out of the box.
They're inside. They're inside.
Doesn't matter, it's, it's the rule. But, um, but in any case, so, you know, I would ask that of those, as long as it's not perceptibly affecting the outside world, why are we even trying to regulate it?
I, I will tell you that this list, where, where this list came from, I mean, certainly there are other ordinances too that, in the research. However, uh, these make it to the list usually because of their, their very high likelihood of, of quickly becoming an issue and, 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 um, and very easily not being able to meet those, those. Or very quickly not being able to meet those performance standards at all. The barber and beauty and nail salon, for example, because of the chemicals that they use. And the equipment that they need.
Specifically, I mean, I'm, I'm not looking to even debate each one of those individually. I'm just saying that it doesn't debunk the argument that this as a separate, the, the standards of operations as a separate set of rules are no more enforceable under home occupation than they are under the residential zone. You know, you, you described the nuisance problem, you know, problems with enforcing nuisance laws. You're gonna have that same problem under home occupation as you would in residential zone. So, I don't see us benefiting by adding complication. And I do see us benefiting by simplifying. Because I, I assume the idea behind amendment would be to get us a better result than we have now. And I'm not sure that we accomplished that by leaving it out under home occupation. I don't, I don't understand the enforcement, uh, problems with just pushing it to zone, to the zone.
So, we, we prosecuted the case on Methodist encampment, for instance, and prevailed?
Yes, ma'am, o- other nuisance conditions, you know, junk stuff, you know, debris piles and, and we have a history against them. So, um, that, yeah, that was part and parcel, we can kind of, um, exclude the home occupation.
We have a history against them, so, um, that, yeah, that was part of parcel, we can kind of exclude the home occupation. But that was, that you talked about the impetus, that was kind of the impetus in bringing this issue to me.
So under what circumstance were they prosecuted? Under what law?
They were prosecuted under the, just the carport thing. We didn't actually go after them.
Setbacked.
It was just the carport issue because when we went out for the home occupation, he had a buddy there and the buddy said he does, or him too, said he did not do work out of his home. However, if you look on the website, he does have a website stating that he does Riley's repair. But we could not prove that he was actually selling or doing repairs for somebody else.
So the trailers that are now in the yard, they're also a code violation?
He says that they're, they're his.
But they're a code violation, right? Because they're in the grass.
Okay, so let's, let's fast forward. So we've got this same citizen doing the same activity and we create a situation where you have to register your home occupations. So, and that's supposedly gonna get us enforcement on him. So he just says, I'm not gonna register because I'm not a home occupation. We are still stuck not being able to do anything, right? It's his interpretation whether it's a home occupation or not, right? Or no?
Well, no, certainly, through, through their office, I mean, it's just like a, a police officer collecting evidence. We would, you know, in, in this case, and I don't know all the specifics, we would go to that website.
So he takes the website down and we're stuck again, right?
No, not, I mean, we would have to just collect evidence.
Here's my nefarious way around it, I jokingly have explained this analogy to other people, but let, let's say, I'm not suggesting I'm gonna do this, right? Okay, just so everybody's clear. But let's say that whatever the business is that's prohibited, it, it's only a home occupation if, if it's commerce, correct? I mean, we don't have to register unless money changes hands, right? Okay, so let's say in his, in his case, he's doing all the auto mechanic work, um, essentially for free and he's gonna charge me when he, uh, for delivery service of a bill. So I'm not doing auto mechanic work for money, I'm doing a delivery service. So I drive to the guy's, I'm the auto mechanic, and I drive to his house with my invoice. And the guy pays me a thousand dollars for my invoice. Because we all know with a wink and a nod that that's what's going on, but we can't, we couldn't enforce anything, could we? I mean, we're forcing it onto us to prove, we have to be there when money changes hands to actually enforce home occupation, right? But we could enforce vehicle maintenance being done in a yard through residential zone prohibiting that activity, could we not? I mean, can't we?
So do that there, I mean, again, we have to build cases.
Okay, but-
And we would go into court with evidence and hopefully in that instance, we'd have the judge or the jury see right through that and go, look, you, you don't, just because you're not taking money for the, the lawnmower repair, but you're taking money for the delivery, come on. You know, Mr. Brady, there, there are kind of quote unquote perfect crimes, but we try to, you know, through law enforcement, we try to get through those. We have a case right now that they're working on where the guy is, we think, allegedly living in the backyard in an RV. But he's not there during the day to prove that up, they have to go by at night and take pictures of this guy living in the RV and then we can't see him in the RV and so we're, they're taking pictures of the lights being on, they're taking pictures of the, of refrigerator there. We had, all that's gonna be, you know, arguably circumstantial, but we're gonna present that at some point, hopefully to a judge or a jury and we're gonna say, this is our case.
Okay, so you just actually explained what I'm trying to avoid, which is, we don't want to go to court, right? We want to enforce what we want to enforce without having to do that, right?
We, let, let me just say, now's a good time for me to say, I, I don't know, you know, I'm providing legal services to counsel. And so when this, my point here is, when, when this came up, I haven't gone through this word by word because I've been waiting for you all to figure out, you know, what, what do you want to do this? But you're absolutely right, what you're getting at is we want a, a, a law that everyone can understand.
Right.
Because ninety-nine point nine percent of us are gonna understand that and go, okay, so if I've got a home occupation, these are the parameters with which I can do a home occupation. It's the point one percent that we can say, well, we've got very clear standards and here's what you're violating and then we, and if they don't come into appliance, then we can decide and go into court and I can prove that up, you know, beyond a reasonable doubt.
Right, so the reasonable doubt goes away if we stick or, if we stay focused on, on the ball, which is perceptible variance from residential character. So are we able to, this is, I guess, this is a legal question, are we able to enforce a code that prohibits vehicle maintenance outs, on my driveway or in my garage with the door open? Are we able to actually enforce a code in a residential zone saying we prohibit that activity, the visible activity? Are we able to do that? We able to write a code that prohibits that?
Vehicle maintenance?
Yes.
I think we could define-
Okay, so-
As a zoning.
As, as, right, so, so that's, that's my point. So to me, all of these should be aimed at specific codes so we don't have to go check, investigate a website because we don't, we don't wanna try and do that. We just really wanna get them, prevent them from doing the visible thing that's affecting the residential character.
My argument with, with that, George, is that you still get into the complication of, um, distinguishing between me changing my oil on my driveway every five thousand miles.
I don't, and here's why.
And somebody doing it all day, every day.
Yeah.
Those are different. One changes the, the residential character of my neighborhood. I would argue that my change in my oil, that's gonna be once every several months, does not change the residential character of the neighborhood. So you, somebody's gonna have to get in there and define-
No, they won't.
To what extent?
Here, here's why, just talk, just talk practically in terms of those, okay? We're not trying to stop the shade tree mechanic, okay? But the scenario would be changing it on, changing one. That's gonna take me an hour, maybe two, to do. I'm gonna do it once every few months. Maybe I start doing it and they call code enforcement, code enforcement comes out. Or, or maybe my neighbor sees me do it and doesn't do anything about it. I, I, I would argue that we probably don't even have to worry about it. However, if I'm a shade tree mechanic and I'm changing my engine, I'm pulling the, the head off and everything in my driveway, even if it's only for a week, I would argue that's something we don't want to have happen. And the amount of time it would take me to do that would be, would be something that would get stopped. And so I don't think we even have to worry about those details. But bigger than that, worrying about those details are not, um, complicating this. Still, we're better off moving these out of home occupation and into residential zone because there's still gonna be holes through that, but there's less holes than we are if we leave it in.
Could, could we do this with, with, I think, all this in mind? Because Mr. Hayes said that he hadn't really spent a lot of time, because I understand, we don't know if this is something we want to pursue or not. I think it's absolutely necessary that we do something that has teeth to prohibit retail sales and some of these things as an occupation in a residential neighborhood. I was just reading on the Connect News thing, there's something called a residential, um, neighborhood conservation, uh, committee that was formed in a community for this very reason. We have a lot of other things for our subcommittee to look at on neighborhoods, renters' policies, this kind of thing. So I think it's necessary to look at how do, how do we best restrict and preserve the character, as, as you said, and that's a good term, of the neighborhood. It's important, and how can we best and most simply do it? So this would be my hopes that Mr. Hayes could do. Yes, I would hope that we could come together on saying, if they're doing something for a trade that's a nuisance, we need to look at the best way, whether it's the zoning code, whether it's this vehicle. We need to have you analyze that, Mr. Hayes, and say, this is the most effective way to do it. Some of these things are gonna, I think, always be subjective. Traffic, how do we know if something increases the, the traffic? I had a neighbor who received, um, a personal products delivery for her home every other day. She doesn't live there anymore, it was a UPS truck, didn't bother me too much, they were there a few minutes and gone. I don't know what she was doing with it. You know, I don't know if she was reselling it, maybe she was Mary Kay. What happens to the Mary Kay people? You know, who have studios where they keep products and that sort of thing and it's all neat and nice. So, you know, I think we need to look at what's our best way to keep neighborhoods preserved. Safety, I think you simplified it, Sabina. I don't know the answer to that, I think that's something Mr. Hayes has to bring to us. Do we do it this way or do we do it in the zoning, in the residential zoning?
Well, unless I'm hearing consensus about doing something different, this is the way that we would approach it, is through a home occupation. And, and I, I think it's because of the issue of, again, as I said earlier, a person's home is their castle, they can do what they want there. And it's, even if they're changing an engine for a full week, it's their place.
Sure.
And they do it all over town now.
Right.
But when it becomes a business, that's quite different. So we would still approach it as a home occupation, certainly tighten it up, um, as Mike has suggested and you have and others. But I, I don't, I want, I don't want us to go away and wonder what we should be doing. But this is what, unless you guys tell me otherwise, that's the direction that we would be going, is, is trying to, um, polish it up a little bit in terms of what we have today.
I think it both accomplishes the purpose, but people need to know, you can't run a business in your, in, in a residence that's gonna make a nuisance for somebody else, plain and simple. I, I don't see why you couldn't have a lady or a man or a young person, student, come into your home and do some clerical work with one vehicle. I don't understand why that's an issue, that may be something we look at collectively.
But this question of whether we need an ordinance or amendment to the zoning ordinances, staff is, feels strongly that we need separate ordinance, not just amendment to the zoning requirements.
That's our recommendation.
The best way to identify.
And the, and the reason is ease of enforcement or?
Yes, because it gets very complicated in terms of, is it for me or is it for personal benefit, um, as commerce? And, and if we just go straight with the zoning and it's for me, you know, I'm gonna have a hard time sending somebody out trying to enforce somebody barbecuing once a week.
Well, you wouldn't do that on that, though, that's the thing. That's not something that we're gonna enforce whether it's home occupation or not, that's the point. There's really, on these standards of operation, there's really only three or four that you actually are, attempt, or can even enforce under home occupation. Employees, you'll never be able to enforce that because we'll never know that they have employees or not.
We would, we could.
How? I mean, how will you know whether-
Then we would investigate.
Yeah, but you, but you, that, that's what I'm saying, the, the, and, and the employees may never be at my house and so that shouldn't be regulated. Like if I, if I'm running a business that it's just my home office, like I forget who the example was, then we would never care about the employees because they never actually come to that office. And so this has to be designed a little different. Storage, all I'm saying is that moving these to doing it under zoning actually is easier to enforce and you get to enforce just as much, if not more, than you're doing right now. And you retain the character of the residence.
Respectfully, respectfully, I think that it would be more difficult because we've got then staff trying to make calls about, gosh, you know, this is not a business, but I gotta complain and they're really just gray area, lots of gray area.
Well, what, why would there be a gray area? Because I call up and I say, hey, they got some outside storage over here next door to me. You don't care whether they're a home occupation, you know that's something to cite.
What's, what do you define as outside storage?
Well, that, that's defined under, the same, that, that problem is defined, is the same problem whether it's home occupation or not, it's still outside storage. And so you have to define that specifically whether it's under home occupation or simply under the zone. So that problem is, is not-
George, but, but, but what if we, what if we get real simple? And we say, the council's job is to set policy, our policy is that residential character of neighborhoods will be maintained. That's what we want to do. Mr. Manager, do it. Then the manager comes to us and says, here's how I recommend we do it. Why would we say, no, 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 do it a different way? Our job is to say, here's what we want, here's, here's the goal, go do it. And when he says, this is how I want to do it, okay.
Okay, because this particular one has got two parts to it. One is, the first part, which is we want to be able to regulate the, the zones, um, you know, resident, we're trying to maintain the residential character. The other is, because the next step, if this is more complicated, which I'm pretty sure that it is, if this is more complicated, the next thing that's gonna come along is they're gonna go, we don't have enough manpower in code enforcement to enforce this more complicated code. And that's something that we as council are gonna end up having to make the decision down the line. So if right now, we could short circuit that question-
Let's wait and see if that evolves. Because really, they think it's gonna make their job easier and less time consuming. Let's give that a chance to play out since they're the ones who are doing it. But let's, you know, in my kitchen, I say, if I ask you to peel potatoes, you use a peeler or you use a knife, that's your choice. I just want the potatoes peeled.
Yeah.
Why, why would I care how they do it if it gets done? And then if they come and tell me, oh, but we got a fifty dollar potato peeler, then I say, uh-oh, no, 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 you just do it with a knife.
Yeah, it's, it's not actually, um, it's not micromanaging, this is actually, what I'm attempting to do is manage.
I didn't use it.
No, I know, I did. And what I'm saying is that rather than wait and see, I'm taking a, to use the code enforcement's word, a proactive approach to handling a situation-
So bottom line, your, your concern is budget, is that this is gonna take more people?
No, no, actually, bottom line is my-
I was just trying to move myself up.
It's all right.
It is efficiency and, and efficiency in codes. And I think this is, is both redundant, inefficient and more complicated than it has to be. And to everybody's original thing, we talked about sign norms, we talked about these, the complications in our codes are ridiculously large. And this is an opportunity for us to, rather than explode them, we can shrink them and accomplish the same goal. So I would say it's efficiency, not budget, and-
Okay, well, that, that makes it clear. And that, then maybe, um, I should say to, um, the staff, I don't agree with that point of view. So from my standpoint, the, um, the staff should continue to refine this. And I'd like to hear a lot more conversation about registration and fees and, and maybe why we could get away, we could do without that.
And if we have time and-
Because that does sound to me like a big nuisance and, and a questionable value.
If you have time, if you could have that subcommittee address that first, maybe they would have some-
You mean with the comprehensive plan?
Maybe they would have some input.
Yeah, they're probably not gonna get to that until spring.
Oh.
Because that's when they start getting to the actual action items. They're not gonna have time to get really good with the weeds on each, each item. It's gonna be more like, we think we should look at this, that and the other without really a whole lot of study about it. Because they won't have time, they'd have three meetings. So-
Okay.
Sabina, do we have an idea of how many businesses will be affected if we move forward with this?
I would imagine rela- relatively small number. It's, uh, again, it's really more, we're trying to get at the more egregious cases. And as, um, Mr. Hayes pointed out, uh, being able to, for me, it's really all about building a case, being able to build a case if it has to get to that point. And, and they're, they are few and far between, they do make, they, they do have a large impact, however. So, um, uh, if you have that type of a, that type of an issue in your neighborhood, it, it affects a lot of, a lot of homeowners and not just the immediate neighbors. And so, uh, to me, it's all about being able to build the case. And this is the way that's been pretty standardly accepted. Um, and I believe I would, um, possibly also through the municipal court systems, that they under, seem to understand home occupation regulations and this is a pretty standard process.
So everybody's grandfathered.
No.
Except in this one, unless they're violating some other code, except vehicle repair and service, repair of large appliances, sales or repair of firearms, ammunition or explosives. So I don't think we have any of those at the current moment. Do we?
We do have a, um, lady who, uh, has dogs and she, um, what's the word, not breeds, shampoos them and, and a residential-
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Exactly.
We do have a lady who does that.
That's not, that's not prohibited.
That's not on the list that can't be grandfathered, that's not on the list that can't be grandfathered.
Well, it says, et cetera. Well, it says, et cetera, so I don't know.
The only ones that say they can't be grandfathered, this is under E, the second paragraph, vehicle repair, repair of large appliances, sale and repair of firearms, ammunition, explosives. So, we'd be looking at everybody who's currently in business and not violating anything else, being-
Say, I have a beauty shop, and I have an employee that doesn't live at my residence?
Even?
That's grandfathered?
Grandfathered, yeah. So, as far as disrupting the status quo, it's not, it's future.
And again, we would be, we would be building a case, just because you, you didn't realize that you needed to register, if, if you go, I mean, the way it's worded right now, if, if you went ahead and registered and showed us that you had a history at that location, that would be fairly easy to do, then we could establish, and, and have that be part of that, part of the inventory, that this was, that this was grandfathered as well.
Mayor, we've got a full presentation-
I understand. Yeah, if, if, if there's no further questions, I'd like to take about a five-minute break. I need myself. So, is that all right with council? At eleven twelve, we'll take about a five-minute break. Eleven fifteen, and we'll go on with item number two, which is review, discuss, and provide direction regarding City of Kerrville Traffic Engineering Study.
So, Mayor, council, we have the study back, we had sent that to you, I think it was last week, there's another draft at your places. And then we also have a presentation that really tracks with the, the study, giving some recommendations on multiple intersections that you all have identified, typically through one-on-one conversations, that we need to take a look at this intersection or that intersection. In some cases, it's been the public that's brought them up, particularly the ones on Shriner. So, we have our engineering consultants here today to walk you through each of these. We are in a workshop environment, because we just really want some general direction on how to proceed on these. I'll say on the outset that, you know, we don't have any money budgeted for a lot of this. If it's small enough, we can do it in-house, like some striping and so forth. So, when you'll, when you see some recommendations about curbing, and this and that and the other, some of it we could do, some of it may be a budget item for the next year, or maybe we just do striping initially, and see how it works first. So, they'll walk through that, and then we'll be glad to take any questions.
Are, are the estimates that we're gonna see, the dollar amounts, based on that decision already being made, that this is something we would do in-house, and that's how we got the estimate?
You, you have a little bit of both.
Okay.
They're very rough estimates, and some are actual medians and curbs, and some are striping, so they'll, they'll have to kind of talk through a little bit of that.
Okay, alright.
Okay, Jess?
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Jess Swaim, I'm Vice President of Six S Engineering. I'm the prime consultant. And I've brought with me today Angel Gonzalez, who's a subconsultant with GKW Engineering. We've both been in the profession quite a while now, about seventeen years, and Angel's nineteen or twenty. We've been working together for a long time. I'm a general agricultural, civil, environmental engineer. Angel does a lot of civil as well, he's also a specialist in traffic engineering, and, and I've brought him on board to Aiden, and lent support in this project. And in this, in this project, our purpose was to study eight primary intersections here in Kerrville. And with that, we had traffic data collection, different evaluations that, that we performed. We prepared some recommendations and some exhibits. I know that you're, you've got a hold of the report there, and as we worked through- I'm gonna go ahead and turn the time o- oh, let's see. There we go, skip to slide. These are the, the existing locations that we looked at, Shriner and Hayes, and Shriner and Clay, Water and Clay, Water at Earl Garrett, Water at G, and then the River Hill Corridor, which there were three primary intersections there. So, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Angel now, as we get into some of the acronyms and special wording in the report, and for our presentation.
Mister McDaniel, just clerical, it's okay that we have two council members that, that would be affected by decisions today, is that okay?
Yeah. Mister Hattie? I mean, in terms of a conflict of interest?
Yeah. As if it's, if it's-
I don't think it's gonna have a special economic effect on their property.
Me, as opposed to my neighbors?
Yeah.
It's gonna be the same amount that gun gives everybody on-
Just checking, and you have your office.
We're not taking action.
No.
Oh, I thought we, you wanted direction.
Well, I might just get some general-
General, gotcha.
How to see them.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, good morning, everyone. When it comes to the acronyms, basically, I'm gonna go through the three main ones that we use frequently in the, on the report. Highway Capacity Manual is basically the manual that is used by traffic engineers, and provides to us the policies and protocols to follow as far as evaluating intersections and corridor. The Level Service that comes from the Highway Capacity Manual, and it's basically how you will grade an intersection from Level Service A to Level Service F. A being the best possible way that you can operate an intersection with free flow, and F when you really have some heavy congestion at, at the intersection with high control delay. Control delay basically is the amount of seconds, the average seconds that a vehicle is at the intersection approach, waiting to be able to clear that intersection. So, just when you read the, the report, and you see control delay, that's what we're looking at. Synchron Model is basically a simulation software that is used in our profession, and it's, it also worked with the Highway Capacity Manual. So, this basically facilitates to us the process of, of analyzing the intersection by using a microsimulation model. This also helps us out to evaluate alternative, and be able to get forecast Level Service at those locations as well. So, that said, we'll start with Shriner. And one of the things that we noticed is, when we got this, this assignment, we basically noticed that we're looking at three different corridors. We're looking at Shriner Corridor, Water Corridor, and the River Hill. So, we, a little bit expanded our scope after we started looking at the, at the intersections, because what we did notice is that, when it comes to Level Service, the operation of the actual intersection, where we're getting good Level Service, A, B's for the majority, and C. C is the worst that we, that is acceptable, or not so bad. But basically is, the one that is acceptable during your peak time, because it's when you have your high, the highest volume of traffic at, at a location. After peak time, in your off-peak, intersections tend to function between A and B in, in, in this area, basically. So, that, with that in mind, we look at Shriner and Hayes, and when we did this, we look at the existing condition of it. We realized that we have a four-lane, a four-lane roadway on Shriner, two lane on each approach, and we have one lane on each approach of Hayes. Based on turning movement counts and our analysis, the intersection operates at a Level Service A for all of the peak times that we've studied. We studied the AM peak time, the midday from eleven to one, and PM from four to six PM. The AM was from seven to nine, performed.
Can we ask then, why there were twelve crashes there?
That's the other component that we did, Mayor. We first looked at the intersection on, on Operation Analysis, looking how it operates. After we did that, we then decided to look a little bit more in-depth in the crash analysis. Be- we, we, what we felt is, okay, they're asking us to look at this intersection is because there's something going on in here. It's not a Level Service, it's not an operation issue. So, we end up looking at a statewide crash data report that it's, they, the state does have. These are crashes that are, have been reported in the areas. They are, there is a possibility that the crash numbers could be a little bit higher if they have not, they have not been reported yet.
And, and in, in this particular intersection, that Shriner and Hayes, there's a traffic signal, do we know, because the accident count was high, when did we put that traffic signal in? Because were the accidents prior to the traffic signal?
It's the last four years, it's-
Oh, it was twelfth or sixteen?
Twelve to sixteen.
But, do we know when the light went on, long, long time, really?
The, the data of accident-
Yeah, maybe longer, anyways, okay.
Okay, yes, in the data of accident, we just went back as far as five years only.
Yeah.
So, when we look at the crash data, we did notice that the majority of those accidents that were occurring, they were rear-end accidents off of Shriner. This means that more than likely, a vehicle's trying to turn left while somebody else on that same lane wants to go through. When we tried to come out with a recommendation, one of the things that we did as well is, we did twenty-four hour counts in the area. We wanted to know what is the amount of vehicles going through Shriner. And the reason of this is because, and, and what we had in mind is to recommend what we call a road diet, reduce the number of lane of your, of, of your corridor, so we can provide a continuous left-turn lane. This will, this, what it will do is take away that movement from the through movement. But if I'm going to do this, I need to make sure that the number of vehicles per day does not exceed a certain amount, in this case, twelve, twelve thousand. And the reason is, because nationwide, different studies that we have done, that is the, the highest number that we will look into doing a road diet to a three-lane section, from a four-lane to a three-lane section. Anything above twelve thousand, then it starts deteriorating, what we discussed before, the Level Service on each intersection.
So, you have fifty-two hundred?
Yes, Mayor. So, for this intersection, what we're recommending is, what we just talked about, it's just to provide one lane in each direction for Shriner, and provide a dedicated left-turn lane. What this will allow us well, by doing this road diet configuration, we will have sufficient pavement on both sides that we can use also for biking as well. This is something that we tend to do at other cities. In this way, you can put your bike, bike cyclists away from the travel lanes. So, that's something that you may want to consider as well.
Did you, in the study, you, you can tell our department, whom I assume could do this work, how far back you start those turn lanes, right?
Yes, we do, Mayor, yes.
But, but it would be continuous.
That's what we're gonna look at, I guess.
Yes, we did.
Later.
Yes. So, yes, what we, the way I did the presentation, if we look at each intersection, but then at the end of, of the Shriner,
Yeah.
I'll give you that, what, what you just asked for. For Shriner Street, that one, did, we, we did get a Level Service C during the PM time. This intersection, as many of you know, operates as a two-way intersect, two-way stop sign, where Shriner is free flow. We, we have the same scenario, we have two lane in each, in each direction approach for Shriner. And ironically, we had the same amount of accidents at this location as well as, as the one where we have a, a traffic signal. The majority of those accidents, same type, rear-end accidents. There were some T-bones as well. When it came to the Level Service C, what the approach that we were having, the worst Level Service is, you're northbound, coming in from Clay, approaching the intersection. One of the things that I was very concerned about this intersection is that it's locating at a, at a curve area, which could impede some sight distance issue. So, we, we look at three different options on this one, to see how we can provide you the best alternative. The option one, it was just-
I'm sorry, when you do these three options, is that the proposed Level of Service, you give a performance evaluation for each option, is that right?
That is correct.
When you do the turn lanes, it's a C, even after you do those?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and the reason is, because even with the turn lane, yes, we, we, the one that we're going to benefit the most in there is just the Shriner, because we're providing those turn lane for Shriner. So, for Shriner, you have Level Service or better control delay than we did on, on, sorry, Clay Street. That's why for, for option one, basically, the only one benefiting from that is those pe- those vehicles that are on Shriner only. Option B, we were looking into controlling turning movements, and making Clay into a right turn in, right turn out only type of movement. One of the things that, we looked at this before I came out, we came out with the idea, is we looked at the, our good area of the, of the area, to make sure that those people that are, that tend to turn left in here, that they have an immediate location, that they can continue to do this movement without affecting their travel time so much. And what we noticed is, in, in this area, we, we have a good grid system, where we have blocks, and each of those blocks, they're connected to Shriner, so we can see that their travel time is not going to be affected as much, their distance to travel will not be affected as much. And what we're doing is rerouting them to do the, the left-turn movement at a location where they have better sight distance, and to, to reduce the, the probability of, of having an accident at, at this location.
Of course, you would put, the next street over is Quinlan, and you had six accidents there.
Yes, correct. Those act, again, those accidents are occurring because of those, the rear-end type of accident. So, with, with this-
Continuous turn.
Correct, with this improvement, in addition to the continuous left-turn lane, so that will definitely help reduce your amount of accidents in the area. The option B definitely gave us good Level of Service. We have Level Service B for the morning, A in the midday, and B for the PM. So, this is a good, a viable solution to, to the location. The next one is the appropriate installation of a roundabout. This roundabout that, that we're designing here, or basically provided a schematic, it will give the full turning movement to all the approaches, but basically, on a roundabout location, this will help out also for traffic speed, to reduce speed in the area. It will take away the sight distance issue. And the roundabout, as far as the, the, the size of the roundabout, will accommodate larger vehicle, and I'm comparing this to River Hill. River Hill, we call those mini roundabouts in, in a subdivision setting.
This would be more like the one at the Shriner Golfers type of thing.
Yes, we, we discussed that, and yes, that is correct.
And, and who owns that property, we would need? What's it being used for?
Different, four different owners, I think.
Back door left is the beverage bar.
I believe it's Mister Fong next to it, isn't it?
No. Beverage Barn, it's the guy that has UPS. Yeah, next door. And then the glass, the rails, and then, they bought it from Miss Balding. We are conditioning people, or whatever.
It just doesn't look like anybody else is affected as greatly as that one on the upper left hand.
And I do want to point out, this diagram does have the purple indication as sidewalk, that wouldn't necessarily be necessary within, I mean, it could be if that was the- But that's not necessarily a, a right-of-way acquisition that would be needed to accommodate the area in the blue, just the circle.
Okay.
That does trim it back the right-of-way needs a, a little bit.
For this alternative, the low-
I think it looks pretty neat.
Have the owners been contacted?
Not at this point.
Well, prematurely, okay.
We wanted to garner direction before we, we did that.
Gotcha.
For this alternative, our Level Service was A on all. So, when it comes to the Shriner Corridor, the, the, what we're proposing as far as the re-striping as a three-lane, we're providing you here the, the limits, and we're giving you the limits from Francisco Lemos to, all the way to Washington Street. This basically goes through the Sidney Baker intersection?
Am I right? Yes.
Why did you put resurfacing in there?
Resurfacing is typically recommended, so basically is to provide a new canvas, so we can do the new striping. And people don't get confused, because when you try to, to take out the, the old striping, they, it always leave, leaves a mark. So, what we tend to do is just, we do a, a micro-surfacing treatment, and- Jess is, is an ex- expert when it comes to that. And then after that, then we provide the new striping.
It's not a full repavement, it would just be taking off the, the very top layer to make sure that we don't have confusion with the old- with the old stripes.
Overstriping. Do we have any of that on our resurfacing plan?
That would be similar to our slurry seal, so we would have to incorporate that into the rainings plan.
So we'd have to maybe replace part of that.
Shriner's not up for slurry seal anytime soon.
We've done some of it.
Haze to Rodriguez.
See, that's what I'm asking, we've already done some at Shriner.
Yeah, and there's parts of it that are not striped or barely striped.
So we wouldn't have to worry about that.
We'd have to evaluate it across that corridor and see the condition of the current
That's assuming every, all of that is done outside, none of that in-house, that price, that estimate?
Yes, more than, yes, yes.
Gotcha.
After Shriner, we move on to Water Street Corridor, and we started with Water and Clay. Same situation here, when we did the level of service, we were getting acceptable level of service during the peak times. Our level of service at this location, I believe they were between As and B. But what we did is, we looked at it, and what we realized, that the main issue in here is the sight distance issue. We look at crash analysis in here, and somehow, there's only two that have been registered. I'm not too sure if that number is correct in the state data, because to me, the issue that we have in there is quite serious. In this one, again, when it comes to the pavement markings, they're faded in this area. We're recommending to do, similar to what we're recommending at Shriner, to provide left turn lane into it. Also, moving the curb, so we can move the stop sign and stop bar of Clay, so we can provide the sight distance required at this location for a 30 mile per hour road.
Can I ask, is the stop sign really that far back? Because I know that picture is where I drive to when I'm making a turn, where the stop sign is.
Your stop sign is-
Really that far back?
Yes, your city's stop sign is actually where it shows right there. It's just a little bit behind the, there's a fire hydrant, and then just behind the fire hydrant, about two, three feet behind the fire hydrant.
Let me ask you, if you just put, for now, a stop sign on the Water Street, on the westbound corner by the parking garage, so that they had to stop there, and then they had to stop entering from Clay?
I didn't ask her to say that.
We have gone back and forth on that, Mayor. And, of course, there's always administrative decisions that can be made over a traffic engineering report. When it comes to a traffic engineering report, looking at an always-stop sign, we have to do what is called a warrant analysis, and we have to follow certain rules and protocols to do this. And what we're looking at is doing a comparison of your volume of the major street versus the volume of the main, of your minor street. And they give us a threshold on what those volumes need to be to meet that warrant. When it comes to a warrant, it does not meet, but there's always administrative decision. You can definitely recommend it, and that could be done. But from the traffic engineering perspective, what we did is come out with a solution that can benefit the vehicular movement, and at the same time, also, what it looks to be pedestrian increase in the area. And with this recommendation that we're providing, we're reducing the pavement width of Water Street at this location, which entails that this will help to reduce speed. Also, when you have pedestrians crossing, this also reduces the length that they have to cross, and then we can provide a pit refuge as well. So that way, when they're crossing the street, they can, they only have to be concerned about one direction, instead of having to worry about both directions.
What about, what about the detector? Are you not there yet? I mean, we don't have that on Water, oh, that's Earl Garrett, never mind.
We'll move, that's the next one. Yes, on Water Street at Arrow, apologies, I didn't provide an area for it. But in that particular intersection, we, the same thing, you know, after our study, when we look at that intersection by itself, on the software, it doesn't have any issues. We have good level of service. When we come out here and look at the, what the actual issue is, the issue is caused by the next light, that it's very close to this intersection, which is the one at Sydney Baker's and Waters. What it's going, what's happening here is that your intersection, that the city controls, it's operated as a pre-time. It doesn't have detection systems. Also, it's not coordinated with the Texas Department of Transportation signal. So, there's gotta be a coordination with Texas, and that's basically what we're trying, we're recommending, is we need to have coordination with Texas on this two signals. So one entity will operate both, and both signals can be synchronized properly, so we can have proper progression throughout this intersection. For what I seen, Sydney Baker at Water does need some attention. I saw quite amount of accident at that location, and I think that needs to be brought up to Texas attention, that there's a safety issue at that, in that location right there.
We did that already, didn't we, staff? Yeah?
Yeah, they've gone through, they've done some upgrades to the controller-
Right.
-with the recent one that got hit-
Right.
-by a vehicle that also came into our Development Services building. So they've done some upgrades, they're still refining there, and certainly, this can piggyback onto that to try to get those synced up better.
So we want to know on the drive-through through Development Service?
At least in that style, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
So for this intersection, the primary recommendation is coordination with Texas, and that both signals operate and communicate with each other. The second recommendation is, that is also needed, is the video detection, some type of detection on the signal. This could be with the video cameras that goes on top of this, the mast arms, like you have on other signals, or it could be with radar. We need to provide a cost to this, to the city staff. We haven't done that yet, and we will be providing that probably within the next couple of days. The other thing is that if we don't have push button in that area, as far as pedestrian face, we should also consider pedestrian face, because we did see, during the field data collection, we did see quite a bit of pedestrian in that area. There's, you do have, I believe, a public parking right in front of-
There's push buttons.
There are? Okay, well then, my apologies, I wasn't aware. I was here, I didn't get to see it.
I'm patient, sometimes I pay more attention than just cars.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you. So, moving on to Water G Street, this is the most critical intersection that we looked at of all eight intersections that we studied. Water G Street definitely does have some crashes in this area. What we saw was a very significant queuing on G Street going northbound. The control delay is definitely exceeding what it will be for a level of service C. I mean, we saw vehicles waiting three, up to three minutes to four minutes sometimes to be able to clear the intersection. So definitely, this is an intersection that does require some type of immediate attention. We conducted a signal warrant, traffic signal warrant, and at this time, it doesn't meet a traffic signal warrant. We do anticipate that in the near future, it will. And typically, what is recommended in locations like this, is to move up, upgrade from a two-way stop sign to a always-stop sign. Knowing, and continue to monitor the intersection within the next two to three years, more than likely, because of, you know, if you continue to grow at a fast pace, then this is something that needs to be monitored probably every two to three years. Because I would expect that this could be, within five to 10 years, it will meet a traffic signal, and that's what the ultimate recommendation would be at this location.
So, how much is a traffic signal as opposed to this $45,000 fix here?
Traffic, well, the $45,000 will still be needed, because that's primarily your restriping.
Still need the turn lanes.
Correct. You still need the turn lane and everything. You will have to add a traffic signal cost, which is between $185,000 to $200,000. But with the recommendation, our level of service did get better, and they were more acceptable between level of service B and C.
B.
You will still see some queuing, but definitely much better than what we have right now, I guess.
Which is F.
Yeah, it's a terrible intersection.
There's enough room in the pavement on G Street, on the south side of Water, to do, essentially split it across three lanes?
Yes, we can do that. Basically, we're reducing the size of your lanes. Right now, your size of the lane, I think there were about 15 feet to 16 feet. So, I think you do have a pavement width of about 33 feet. So what we're doing is making the lanes 11, around 11 feet.
So it's like a UPS truck gonna be able to make that turn-
Yes.
-off of Water onto G?
Yes, that's not gonna be an issue. We go as low as 10 feet on lanes, and we try to be desirable at 12, that's what the desirable is, but our minimum is 10 feet.
I would expect peak time is your worst time, but I've been there at a lot of peak times, and you do wait forever, and I would think it'd be a good idea to look at budgeting in the future for a light there.
I think that that would be very wise to do, because I do see the need for it.
Yeah, I mean, you can see that in the picture, you've got, you catch a car that's going-
Yeah.
-where they're gonna normally go, which is why.
In the middle.
Yeah. So, anyways.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Okay. River Hill Corridor, again, what we noticed in there, this is not a level of service issue. You, it's not whatsoever. What we did encounter, on being out in the field, illegal movement, primarily. It's what we encounter.
You pulled them all over, right?
Excuse me?
You pulled them all over, right? No?
I think what we do is do all these corrections, he says, and then park, don't do River Hill, park a cop there, because we won't beat them at these other places, and collect the money that'll pay for these other things.
Very wise. So, in here, yes, what we noticed is that the roundabout itself, without proper standardization of the approaches, it's not, it's not working properly. Payment marking is not working properly. And it's not being effective, is what I mean. Payment markings are there to try to, to guide the vehicles, the motorists, but they're not really paying attention to the payment marking. All they see is an opening, and they go for it.
These are the lines.
So, this one was the fun one.
We should have deputized you.
So, in here, what basically, what we're trying to, our recommendation is basically to provide proper standardization of all the approaches, that will force them to make the movement that the roundabout is intended to be used as. So all three recommendations that we're doing is basically adding curb, adding race median as well. And the most important one, because these are mini roundabout, the inner circle that we have that look like a planner, we definitely recommend those to be taken out as well. We need to make sure that we make the intersection also available and accessible to larger vehicles. The mini roundabout function is, is to move the traffic that you will have on a daily basis. Regular vehicles, trucks, like pickup trucks, is what I mean. But you do have to make sure that those intersections are accessible for 18-wheelers when they have to go through here, and more importantly, emergency vehicles.
School buses, fire trucks.
Yes, correct.
Traffic.
Correct.
Get it on my street, they can't get on.
They can get, exactly. So, what is recommended, when you have a mini roundabout, the inner circle that you have, it's supposed to have a mountable curb, so that way, those vehicles that tend to go through there maybe once a day, that they have that accessibility to mount on top of the curb and do the movement. Emergency vehicles, the same thing. Emergency vehicles have a wider wheelbase, and we need to make sure that we can accommodate them to go through there without any issues, so they can get to where they need to get. So, these are the recommendations as far as the race median and payment marking also, in addition to those payment marking and race median, proper signage for the approaches of each, for each of the approaches to the roundabout. So, now I guess if you guys have any additional questions regarding our recommendation?
My comment would be, we go to the safety issues first, like Shriner Street, I love the idea of those turn lanes all the way down, because that's where we have the safety issues, which is costly.
That and G Street more.
Yes, absolutely, G Street, that intersection. I like the idea at the parking garage of just trying a stop sign in both areas, moving that forward, if you will, and then putting one, rather than doing all of that expensive stuff right now. Because the roundabout is a great idea, the Clay Street and Shriner Street, but that's the most costly, but-
Yeah, we'd want to talk to the property owners.
Yeah, absolutely, that'd be number one.
You know, I agree with you at the Water Street and Clay Street, the only concern that I have is that you have a lot of cutting traffic, and they could stack, if there's enough of it, back up into the Sydney Baker intersection.
Yes, I'd- I thought you were just gonna have it in the other direction, coming towards Sydney Baker.
You'd have to have all way.
All way.
All three.
His proposal was to just have it on Clay, entering Sydney Baker. They're talking about adding stops on the Sydney, or the Water Street.
Is it possible to put a stop sign only on the Sydney Baker bound side of Water Street, so that you stack up back toward Francisco Lemus, which is a long way, if there was any stacking?
I'm not sure we're talking about the same place.
Yeah, it would be confusing, I think, to motorists too.
See, on the Clay, on the Clay, Water Street intersection, I like what they propose, but I would take away the pedestrian refuge, only because of the thing I mentioned, the parade, and I'm not sure how much benefit, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, my, this one I thought a lot about, and I've even had discussions with Vincent when I think about it, is, I mean, it's dangerous coming out of there, the way it is today. So what I would suggest that we do, at least initially, is where we, you see all the blue in these photos for new curb?
Yeah.
That's just basically markings at this point.
Try it.
There we go, when we stripe it. Try to narrow the lane with stripes, to slow the traffic down. You know, that's not gonna be as expensive, try it that way. But I think down the road, and especially if we get to Shell Hayes' house, usable and more traffic to that area, that the pedestrian count is gonna warrant eventually, an always-stop. But right now, you know, given the recommendation from the traffic engineer, that we go with, as you suggested, what they recommended, but not new curb, do paint. Except maybe on that one area where the stop sign is on Clay, so that you can move that stop sign up.
Yeah.
How expensive are those big yellow reflector things like at River Hill? Yeah, I don't know.
They're pretty expensive. You really don't save a lot from that compared to what the curbing is.
Okay. Are we gonna be leaving those in River Hill? Can you reuse those, or no?
Those, all those ones that are there now, if we just stripe it and no new curb, we'd keep them there, and do additional striping beyond what's already there.
Are you back to River Hill?
No, I was just, River Hill, because those big yellow things, I didn't know, instead of doing curb, we can put those-
There.
Because those really wake you up.
But we removed them at the first one coming off of 173, but they're still at the other locations, and I don't think they're the larger ones in some of the other, yeah, they are. I mean, we could reuse them, but we, I'd probably just keep them where they are. I, I mean, we could reuse them, but we, I'd probably just keep them where they are and do additional painting, including what was suggested to me at the River Hill HOA meeting, is painting arrows actually on the pavement in the canyon where the traffic is supposed to go around. I mean, people are going to, you know, I just hate to spend a whole lot more money on those things.
I would not, I would not spend money to put paint on the ground if you're gonna be doing this with the thing. How much did that cost you?
Yeah, who proposed that? We need to collect. Can you reuse the brick in the middle? We can do decorator.
Several have been rebuilt multiple times. The one at my location's been rebuilt four or five times.
Is that the driver's insurance that pays for that or is that?
Yes, sir.
I hope so.
So could you come back to us with a, a cost of-
Have a brick and then brought up-
The famous one.
Well, the one, the one that just happened most recently, the other issue that we have at that location is the lighting is very poor. So we need to look at another street light there.
That's up there.
Is it Springfield?
No, that one's Canada.
You can take the one that's off the corner of my house, cause it lights up my house at midnight.
Do you think that option B on the Shriners and Clay where it just has the median, that's a twenty thousand dollar, rather than a roundabout? That gives you a BAB. Do you have any problems with that or?
I have a concern that the business owners in that area are gonna object to it.
Before we start?
You know, the-
It's a big median.
That prohibits the left turn.
North or south on Clay?
Well, you still can't do it with a roundabout either.
I think, I mean, I-
They just go around.
No, you would, you would go around. You can't access, yeah. But on the Shriners Clay one, that to me is, is a decid, I mean, roundabout would be ideal, okay? But if we're talking something that's a hundred and twenty or something thousand dollars or even more, I, I would go with the restriction, restricting the Clay movement. For the business owners, like he said, it won't take us but a very short amount of time. People realize they make their left at the block earlier. We do the same thing at, was it Avenue B or A or whatever it is in Broadway? Where there's, you can't go a certain way, and so people do it. My concern with the restriction is, okay, it's up there, is that somebody's gonna come down, coming down Shriners. No, they're gonna come down Shriners and they, they wanna go left on Clay. So instead of going left a block earlier, they're gonna start going left into whatever that business is, it's right on the corner. And there's an alley, cause I think there's an alley right behind, so they could do that. And that would be my biggest concern, that we got that type of maneuvering going on.
With the roundabout, do you put stop signs there? Is that what you have over there at, at the golf course so that-
Yield.
Yield, so that you can go all the way around into the other incoming lane.
I'm hearing that the roundabout's the preferred option.
Correct.
Notwithstanding, you know, after we hear from the, cost and also here-
The owners, the landowners.
So we'll, we'll look at that as the preferred option and, well, I'm not hearing any objection to any of these, at least yet. Is there any objection to any of this?
No, I just, on the roundabout, when we're talking about on Clay and Shriners, do those bushes come up at all? Cause I know that restricts my view when I'm looking to the right to see if there's any traffic. Is there anything we can?
If we put the sidewalk in there, it'd have to come out.
Like the big ones aren't that bad. It's just those low bushes and actually park up to that, so you can't see anything to the right.
We've worked with them to do some trimming to, to enhance the site visibility as, as best it can, but you're right, they, for, particularly on the low vehicle, it is difficult to see over that.
But, but a circle.
Yeah, but I was just saying in the meantime.
That is correct. That is correct.
And if any part of that on the Shriners that we've already done could be utilized, would be nice. That we've already resurfaced.
And in clarification on, it is, oh, it's that one. So the Shriners Street, as it continues on to Sydney Baker, prior to this roundabout spot, we're going with this continuous turn lane. As it gets to the light at Sydney Baker, is it a dedicated?
That is correct, yes.
So it's, it's something a little bit different than-
Yes, it will be a left turn lane.
Left turn only.
Left turn only, yes. It continues left turn lane when it goes, approaches the, as the signal intersection, then that will become a left turn only and then you have one through movement, through and right.
This door, direction from Sydney Baker on Shriners, is that gonna be one lane the whole way? Or is it gonna be two that merges into one real fast?
On the-
Immediately turning?
Yeah.
Cause you're immediately turning.
Say I'm coming on Shriners Street across Sydney Baker where the police station is.
Yes.
And I come across, is it gonna be one lane as soon as I cross Sydney Baker?
No, it's gonna, that's why the transition will start, we will start at Washington Street, which is on the other side of Sydney Baker.
Okay, all right, all right. So it will be one lane next to Jack in the Box the whole?
That is correct.
Start across the road. Cause we didn't see that.
Mayor, I need to go to a phone call with the Balding Rating Agency for our refunding, so the agent take over.
Okay. What I'd like to, I like all of these too. I'd like to see what the package price is gonna be and where it's gonna come from, and that'd be our decision. And then establish our priority list and then kind of, when we could, which, which ones are the most expedient, you know?
So what we can do, we can take your feedback from this morning and we'll, we'll work with Mr. Swaim, Mr. Gonzalez to kind of tighten up the cost estimates and bring that back to this group and kind of prioritize based off of your feedback today and, and bring that back to you guys for further direction on how you'd like us to proceed.
Sounds good.
And have I understood, everybody's more in favor of, of doing paint first?
Doing which with paint?
The, instead of the curving.
Instead of curving.
Oh, yeah.
And we'll tighten up as well, you know, the options that we have for doing that in-house versus, you know, contracting that out and try to get some estimates there. Again, the, you know, the same guys that are doing the striping are the ones that, that, you know, do a lot of our street work. And so we know that there's a concern there and being able to maximize our street work. So we'll try to provide some timeframes of just kind of what kind of man-hours that may look like as well.
That sounds good. Any further questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming today.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We will then adjourn at twelve oh one.